Wow.
Right.
Yeah, well, yeah, we're all done making it to that, but for right now, it's just.
Conversation.
Conversation about what the board would like to do. Um, given where we ended up. At the hearing.
You're over there all by yourself.
So I'll get that.
Never like you back to the room.
All right, so we're going to, uh.
Yeah, so you have, you know, you had the budget, you had the budget hearing. The, you have what the budget committee came as their budget.
Their budget, yeah.
That will be regardless, what goes on the warrant. Um, and so I think the question is, do you guys have questions and? Other folks, so that when you get to the part where you're each recommending or not recommending, you have all the information you need to make that decision.
Yes, so, um.
Oh, Joe is here. You decided to come after all, Joe.
Yeah.
I said you weren't gonna be here, okay. Well, it's nice to have you. All right, gotcha.
So we're, we're open for discussion. Um, I'm not sure where people want to start.
So I don't have any more questions about the budget, um, that the budget committees put together. I have some questions about the MS twenty-seven. Can we answer those now?
That would be appropriate, yeah.
Okay, so I just want to be clear in this draft. MF twenty-seven, that what we show as a school board appropriation for regular program will match what the budget committee has presented.
That depends on what you vote on of our budget. That's why it can be separate or it can be the same.
So what, um, I don't have any documentation showing anything different than what the budget committee has presented. Is there a, a different administrator's budget that we should have?
We had given that out and we talked about it at the last meeting.
Yeah, we talked about it at the last meeting.
Where we also sent out the email explaining this is what the budget committee had said. They were looking at, this is what we felt comfortable doing as an administration. So initially, you know, take the biggest money part, which are people.
Mm-hmm.
The budget committee had said about the equivalent of eight positions. The administration had gone back and talked about it and said, well, you know, we feel comfortable doing four of them now. And the other two, we'd rather have more conversa- or the other four, we'd rather have more conversations on. The budget committee came back and said, you know, we've talked about it and almost likes what the difference, you know, we'll put you back in and, um, go from there. So that's sort of.
Okay.
That's the big picture dollar amount.
So that's the, where under regular programs where we have a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar difference, that's where that all comes from.
Yeah, that should be the difference.
All right, I don't recall any sort of documentation other than maybe those informal feeling emails, um.
Well, it was, that was the, the whole presentation that you guys made.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, but there, I guess what I'm asking is there was no formal, like, here's the budget.
No, you did not get a, I don't believe, right? They didn't get a full-on budget, did they?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It was included in the, in the board packet. From the packet.
I believe so. I can go back and.
Yeah.
No, I can go back just as well.
I'm pretty sure I saw it when we were, because I'm, I'm pretty sure when, when, when you were going over those numbers, I remember opening it and being like. There were a lot of numbers.
Well, that was my only budget question. I don't think it would pass on one of them.
Uh, I have one. Yeah, at the end of the budget hearing on one twelve. Uh, Jamie Teague wanted to add a hundred and forty-seven thousand to the thirty-five oh fifty-nine two twenty-five. Is that correct? Uh, that's the way I had written it in my notes. Jamie Teague made a, a motion or whatever to do that and, um, that it's supposed to be passed. And now I see in this that that number never changed.
Now, so what did she ask to do? Originally, and correct me if I'm wrong, I can go back to the minutes, but I'm trying to do it from my old memory here. They had said some amount that were the savings, right? The salary savings from not filling positions at the immediate start of the year. And I think they had said like a hundred and forty thousand or some amount. And Jamie, I believe, changed it to one forty-seven. But it didn't change anything because it's not really a budgetary amount. It's just saying, hey, you know, you can save this money.
We added a hundred and forty-seven thousand to the budget.
To the budget?
To their budget.
Yeah.
That was for the two.
They were resetting an F B.
Those were the two, though, right?
Yeah, that's right, yes.
That's, that's the two that we're talking about, the reduction of four to two. That's, that's what I thought. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about a different.
I just had a note here that said Jamie Teague wants to add one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, which I think is the number that you had on your round. But she, you, you had like a big. You know, you know, those, those before we had smart boards, things that she used that to write on. I think you had a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars written down there. And I thought Jamie, and I assume she's not here.
She is on speaker.
Oh, okay. Um, she asked her to, to, to add that back to the budget. And, and I just had the number of thirty-five oh fifty-nine two twenty-five. I thought that's where the one forty-seven was gonna get added to.
Thirty-five what?
Thirty-five oh fifty-nine two twenty-five. I thought the one forty-seven was going to go into that. I thought that's what Jamie was talking about. If Jamie is there, can she speak about this? Are you there, Jamie?
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm listening. I'm hearing bits and pieces. I'm listening and, um, I'm driving.
Okay.
So I can't look, I can't look at documents.
Yeah, I'll tell you what the minutes are.
I did make that motion and it did carry.
We did.
And it, it's in the minutes.
It is.
Does the question, it does question what is the actual bottom line number?
Because, because I did add them back into Charleston and Wallville. Those were the two places. So they did get added back in.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, 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 I just, I.
Yeah.
It's in my hand because I'm driving.
If I may. Makes sense.
So I, I wanted to.
The original was thir- thirty-four, nine, twelve, two twenty-six was what the budget committee came originally.
So this number should have been, that's what the total came up to. Thirty-four, nine, twelve, two twenty-five plus one forty-seven. Came to thirty-five oh something, oh fifty-nine, two twenty-five. Okay, okay. Now I fully understand. I'm sorry, I missed that.
So.
That's my fault.
Just to kind of focus this discussion between now and six o'clock, um, what we want to do as a school board is to look at, um, pretty much.
What your proposed budget is, if you want it to be the budget committee's.
Right, we just want to, to say if we want our proposed budget to be, what, what was presented to us, um, at the last meeting was that there was a difference between the two. And so what we want to talk about is, do we want to say, say that, uh, what, what we would be supporting would be something that would be different than the budget committee? Or, or do we want to, that would be slightly more? Or do we want to say that we're just going to be supporting the budget committee? Uh, that's, that's really the discussion that we want to have. So, um, it's the M, so we're basically gonna look at the, at the MS twenty-seven, right? And see whether this is what, um, is this basically is what, is, is, is what Mary put together because she didn't have anything else to put together? Because we haven't really had a chance to really talk about it. Um, and so is this what we want to, um, what we want to support? Or do we want to go with, with what the, um, budget committee is, is, is going with? It's a, I mean, it's, it's a large number that's a difference, but it's not in, in the huge, in the huge, in the huge scheme of things. If you just look at the number, it's a big number, but in the huge scheme of things, if you look at the total budget numbers, it's not a huge number, so.
It was on total of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Difference?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's. About one percent. Shelley, is your hand raised?
Yeah.
So, I guess I'm confused as to what, so at six o'clock, we're just gonna be voting with no discussion?
At six o'clock, you, my understanding is both the school board and the budget committee would vote whether they recommend whatever you decide to do. And so it's those budget committees.
But there wouldn't, so there wouldn't be any discussions at six o'clock, we're supposed to have them now?
Correct.
All right, so yeah, I support the budget committee. And I, and I understand that it's a little less than what the proposed default budget is. I think the budget committee has done a phenomenal job. I also appreciate Jamie and the committee raising their thirty-four to, to the one forty-seven. I'm sure they have a multitudes of, of reasons why they did that, but I support that. And I definitely think that we could do a budget of thirty-five oh fifty-nine two two-five. And I do understand that this will cause some movement on the administration part and the leadership team part. Um, but I also think it's, it's much needed. It, it's moving in the right direction.
Yeah, I too, I'm gonna vote for the budget committee's budget. Um, I don't, I think the difference is so small that we can, um, make those changes. My only kind of caveat is that, um, it was said at some meeting that we'll be, well, no one's gonna lose their job because we'll just take teachers and move them around because people move. And I have my last count, there are at least forty-eight different licensed teacher and special education license endorsements. So you can't just move one teacher from one spot to another spot. There has to be an opening for your, um, in, with your endorsement. Um, some of them might be a little bit, we can do some movement around.
Easier at the elementary level.
Yeah, yeah. So since we have, um, that, if I'm re-elected in April, or when I've been, I'm still here. I will still, uh, I will still fight to keep some positions if that means a teacher losing their job. So I don't want any teachers to lose their jobs over this. I'm, I'm completely okay with just kind of moving some teachers around, but I won't, uh, I will fight for teachers not losing their jobs. But staying within.
Thank you. Who else is here? Joe, do you want to say anything?
Um, no, that was my one question. I, as long as that, that one, uh, one, uh, yeah, a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars was added back in. I was all in favor of the, um, the, um. I'm, I'm losing my mind.
It's easy, Joe. It's okay. It's budget season and you're on a select board as well.
God. I will never do this again.
So many people understand.
But I am in favor of everything that the budget committee did. I thought you guys did have been, uh.
Thank you.
And I, um, um, as long as that one forty-seven, that is not all that.
Listen, um, I am completely in agreement with the last three opinions. Now that I've seen where the different numbers clearly come from. And, um, I'm sure that the one forty-seven was added back in properly. And I am very, very pleased to, to support the budget committee and what they've done. And then I look forward to the next year, uh, spending it properly.
And you get where the, that, that it was presented at the.
Oh, yeah, I went back and I can.
Okay, all right. I just, I want to make sure that, that you see that it was, that it was, wasn't like it just numbers kind of. Hold up.
Um, I do have the formal part that I can see as well.
Agreed. Andy, did you want to say anything?
Uh, I concur with my fellow board members. I think that, uh, the difference between the budget committee's proposal and the default budget is, is a good number so that people have a good choice on what they want to support. And if the budget passes or the budget fails, that gives clear direction to the board on where the public wants to spend money or not spend money.
Very great. Okay, yeah, Jamie is on one.
Oh, Jamie, Jamie, you are a board member. What, what is your?
Hi. So I'm just gonna pull over so I don't lose you because I'm almost to the house.
All right.
There, there, I'm almost to the house, but there is a ravine where I'm gonna lose you for like a minute.
Okay.
Um, I'll be at, I'll be at the house in like five minutes. Um, I, I will support the budget committee's budget. I think that we will have enough open positions, unfortunately. I, I wish that wasn't the case. But I think we have enough money in reserve that if something happens that, um, we can cover it. And at the end of the day, I know that the school board will decide where the money gets spent. So, you know, even though the money that the budget committee and, and everything is talked about cutting, whether it's just, you know, a consolidation of teaching positions, we all know that if that's not feasible, that we have the ability to move funds and make cuts in other areas. So I will be supporting the budget committee's efforts. Um, and, and it's got a great learning process and I think we can make it even better next year. And I agree with Andy, if the people don't like this budget, then they can vote no and the default will go in and it will be higher. So thank you. I'll see you in a few minutes.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thanks, Dan. Okay. Um, I, um, I, I feel like, um, I thought that the presentation that, that y'all did was, was very, um, was very fair and, and represented what the, uh, I thought that it was very good to hear that, what, from the administration in terms of that they had, uh, it was good to hear that they had really thought through and, and made some changes and, 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 and cut more and, and try, you know, brought it down to being, to being as close as it was. And, and with that, I think that it's a very good, would be a very good thing for us to present a united front, um, to the voters. Um, and not to do a thing of saying the school board's doing this, saying this, and the budget committee's saying this. I think we need to, um, we need to come, we need to bring this, we need to bring our community together. And, um, and saying, oh, you guys did all that work, but we don't, we don't support you. Would not be doing that. And, um, and I, and, and I think you did do a lot of work and you put a lot of thought and, and effort into it. Uh, um, and I think that the, the, um, and the administrators, um, put a lot of thought and effort into, into what they were putting into, into, um, their numbers as well. And, um, and so I think that, um, I would like to, um, support the, the work of the budget committee. Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I just want to thank the budget committee, and I know that there's only three of you here, but I'm assuming you can relay the message. Um, I think you guys were extremely thoughtful. I think each one of you brought a commitment to your communities, a commitment to the school, a commitment to the students, and I think you really looked at all aspects of it. And I greatly appreciate all the time that you spent on this. I'm, I'm thankful that each and every one of you, um, volunteered for this. Not an easy thing to do. I hope each and every one of you run again. I don't know if we'll get that lucky, but, um, this district and, and all of our communities got an all-star team on this budget committee this year. I greatly appreciate all of the work you have done.
Thank you.
And putting the one forty-seven back in.
Yes.
Yeah.
We do have time. I do want to talk about. No, in the minutes first.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and, and do the approval of the minutes. So that kind of get a jumpstart on the agenda.
Uh, actually, let's, uh, we don't, they don't, they, uh, the budget, I'm sorry. The budget committee does not have a quorum right now, so they can't vote on their.
Right.
We can do the, we can do ours, but not the other committee's.
Oh, yeah, so we can do the first two, but not the other.
Correct.
So, um, so do I turn a motion for the January ninth, um, public session for the school board? Approval of those minutes?
Would.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Um, uh, any discussion?
I have one, one quick change. Um, it was noted in the minutes that Brendan Minahan was the five oh four coordinator. And he's not.
Oh, good.
I think so, that just needs to be.
Where it says that I was listed as a five oh four and the program was set, it was down.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that. I was like, oh.
Sorry about that. Yeah.
Prevents that meeting. What happens when you miss a meeting? They give you the thing. Doesn't even matter.
But going forward, somebody might look back in the minutes and want to know who it was or what.
I do my job.
All right, um, so with that change, um.
Any more discussion?
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any votes? All right, um, the January ninth, two thousand twenty-three non-public school board in votes.
I'll make a motion to approve them, ask for some.
Oh, second.
Your people doing the first one.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any votes? No?
Brendan's email.
Oh.
So hold on a second.
Oh.
Um, I did want to, um, talk to the board before we go forward with, um, approving the more articles for tonight and giving a recommendation just to talk a little bit about six and seven, which are the articles, um, that'll be, are planning on having a hearing on on Monday. Um, so I did reach out to our attorney because I needed some help with some explanation. Um, because we usually put that in the budget digest and I just wanted to, um, make you aware of what he had to say. He did suggest switching them, which so, um, I'm. Okay. You can get that at my. Yeah, no, sorry. It is, there's a lot of information here, but, um, I'm also on a computer that I'm not super familiar with because it's a loner. Um, this is taking a little longer. So. I'm sure the email comes on the budget digest, so. Trying to get to the area where he, why he. Okay, so also looking at these two more articles, I see voters saying they will not approve six until they know the outcome of seven. If it is not too late, these two articles could be switched in the warrant. So that it, to him, I think it made more sense to, to flip off them.
That, that didn't make sense to me. Because the voters aren't gonna know the result of seven or six until the votes are tallied.
Right. Right, so whether or not you want to take one off and get the answer to one and put one on next year, just a conversation. And in light of some of the feedback that you got, I just wanted to let you know you still have an opportunity to take them off if you choose tonight. But once they get posted tomorrow, no changes can be made. We can't take them off. The only change that can be made would be a deliberative if somebody were to, and he gave me, gave me some wording if somebody were to want to table them for further discussion at later time. Which may come out of Monday. If people come out, I, I'm just giving you your options now so that you know going into Monday what that looks like. Monday, see, why are we having, you know, this is an elementary question. Why are we having a hearing after we can make any changes? Like, what's the point of getting feedback if we can't take it into account?
Because it had to be posted. There were some real challenges with the posting requirements. And if I remember correctly, the thirtieth is the last possible day that you could do it and still meet the posting requirements.
So we had some language in the Articles of Agreement that I, we have not made a change to the Articles of Agreement since I've been here, so I wasn't aware of it. Um, and it wasn't until he reviewed all of these changes that he brought it to our attention. And by the time he brought it to our attention, um. That we needed to have a hearing? That we needed to, so that it's, it, and it's very specific. You have to, I had to get it in the newspaper. And then I, it had to be in the newspaper for, for twenty, fourteen days? Fourteen days before a hearing? So the people knew the language, come to the hearing, and then it had to be X and I days before deliberative. So if we had this very tight timeline to get everything done.
So even with the meeting on, on Monday, we can't, even if people come out in droves, we can't change it once.
You can change it at deliberative, say that, um, so I can tell you what he had to say about that.
No, that's fine. Okay, I, I understand what you're saying. It's just there's no immediate recourse on Monday if people.
Correct.
Fill up and go.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, so your choice would be today, you could make that decision. But on Monday, then the people, whomever that happened, that will be leaving the board. If a change was to be made, it would be at deliberative on the ninth.
I, I still think that these need to be on the ballot and let the voters do what they want with them. And I'm reading the digest now and it's, they're, they're kind of clear. I don't really like six before seven, but I mean, then it's.
I can put, I can change it back. It doesn't, it, I'm just giving you.
Yeah, I think si- I think seven sets six up. Now I feel like I'm doing a joke.
No, seven, eight, nine.
Yeah, I know. I know, my daughter would be like, no. So I really think because, I mean, and, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, but I just, I like seven before six.
I am in complete agreement because the fear out there, because people read into themselves without getting all the information, is we vote yet because of our school. And that's not it at all. So to have closure of come first in bold, I think will cause people to just shut down and you know, no, 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 versus think about it a little bit.
And the digest is really good, so like the, the information on the warrant seven, that's a really great explanation. And I think if people were to read that before they get into six, they might understand six a little bit better.
I can flip them back. It's, it's very yours, so. Can't predict the outcome by any means, but I would be more comfortable with six with switching them back.
Okay.
I don't have any other answers. Yeah, I'll be on here.
Anyway, you have to do it.
I'll have to play online.
You're online.
Was added, but she's into that of one big happy family.
Yeah.
Okay, so where are those six o'clock big happy family coming?
All right. Can I ask one question about the, the tax estimated with admin changes from one six three? Let's see, I think I'm in the old document, which means. Sorry.
I have it done. Yes. Let me just, yes, it does.
If I'm looking at the twenty-three, twenty-four budget digest draft.
Yep.
Um, where it talks about the tax rate invitation. What number were those calculated from? From the administrative?
No.
Suggestion or from the?
From the budget committees. They're from the budget committees. I'll just go and check with that. They're budget committees.
Okay, thank you.
It's the budget committee's new number, it's the one forty-seven.
Thirty-five oh five one.
Yeah, whatever that, yep.
Thank you.
You pledge all the order and then you have one set of minutes.
Right. All right. Especially me, just to allow that behind the cities of America and you to the republic. God, in this liberty and justice. We're doing the last approval of minutes, um, the January twelfth, uh, two thousand twenty-three budget hearing, um, for the budget committee. Do I hear a motion for approval of those minutes?
Would we approve them?
No.
So they would just have to do it, yeah.
So move, second.
This is the budget committee in favor of their own.
Those are the minutes that I sent out this afternoon.
Um, actually, are they, I did not see those.
Well, there were two. You sent out the ones.
I, I sent my, my minutes. Do you have a set of minutes? Did you amend them?
Yours is from your work. Yours is from your work session, right?
Correct, on the eleven.
Yeah, this is from the budget hearing itself.
Hearing on the twelve.
Okay.
Yeah. This is just for the budget hearing.
We saw those today, right?
Correct.
It was two days ago for Monday, the other day.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Those are the ones that were approved then tonight. At least for this.
For this, this motion.
This question, yes.
For this question, right.
Okay. And then a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, may I entertain a motion for the January eleventh meeting minutes that I sent out this afternoon. If anybody hasn't had a chance to read them, I can read them now.
I have not read them.
Okay, I can read them now. They're quite short.
They are.
And if I can check with Misty, that's all that needs to be on it, right?
Um, no, I haven't seen it yet. Hold on one second, I'm sorry. Who's present? Yep.
To be read into the minutes, the budget committee convened at six zero five P M. January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Members present, Steve Barone, Gabriel St. Pierre, Jennifer Marchese, Amanda Chapie, Chris Spalding, and Michael Aaron. A working session of the committee ensued in preparation for the budget hearing. Meeting adjourned at nine oh eight P M. Respectfully submitted, Gabriel St. Pierre Chair. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
I'm sorry, I didn't get, who made the motion. I was looking and missed it. If somebody did make the motion and seconded.
Approve them.
To approve now.
I might have skipped ahead.
I move to.
Okay.
Michael move, Jennifer seconded.
Great, thank you.
Uh, the motion passes with one extension, Steve Blesio.
And we might just want to see, Steve Barone may have joined us, um, if you wanted to get his vote as well. I don't know if he's on, but he was.
He was, he just left us.
Okay.
He's back.
Okay, great. Little one is, little one is vote on the next part.
So how would, how do you want to do this? Do you want to go through each one? And then the board votes, and then the budget committee?
We're gonna have the budget committee go first, only because they'll, they'll only do the money articles, and I have that listed first, since it was theirs. So we'll do the budget committee, and then we'll do this board.
Okay, do we need to read them, do you think? Or?
That's, that's.
Up to the, up to y'all.
Okay. If you could read them.
Okay, you want me to read them while?
Yeah.
Article one is the operating budget.
Jamie did ever hand raise, sorry.
You want to ask Jamie?
Yes, Jamie.
That was gonna be my question, what, the one that Jennifer asked, so I'll say that. Thank you.
Be as melodious away as I can. Do the Fallmount Regional School District raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately? The amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or is amended by the vote at the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling thirty-five million, fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be thirty-five million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by the previous, by previous action of the Fallmount Regional School District or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA forty colon thirteen, numbers ten and sixteen, to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. Majority vote required.
Do you want to go, uh, vote for this, because we have people online?
I have just one comment.
Yeah, there's a comma.
There's a commendation.
Right here. I was gonna say it.
People, we saw it.
Oh, in that one?
Yeah.
Okay, not.
It's on the warrant.
Okay. I'm not looking at the warrant, but thank you.
The man person didn't mention it.
He was waiting. It was like a test to see if I could save the numbers without the commas in it, hey, whoa, very hard. So, yeah, so you'll want to do a roll call.
Yep. Whoever wants to leave that. So, if you can do a roll call, the budget committee recommends this appropriation by a vote of, and then we can just go right around and say, aye, yes, yes.
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 Steve?
Yes, yes.
Teague, yes.
Are we missing somebody from the budget committee?
Yeah, so absent.
So one, yeah, air.
I was just putting them in, six, yes.
And then the school board would do the same.
Seven, yes.
Absent, yes.
One absence.
Seven, yes, fifteen.
Seven, got it, okay. And then the school board would do the same.
Yeah, okay, so, um. Alyssa?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
And Jamie?
Teague, yes.
All right, now.
What was that, Pam?
That was seven, nothing. Seven, yes, zero, no, zero, absent. Article two, then go on to that one. Shall the Fallmount Regional School District vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Fallmount Regional School Board and the Fallmount Teacher Association, which calls for the following increases in wages and benefits at the current staffing level? Year of twenty twenty-three, twenty-four contract, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars. Two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five contract, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. Two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six contract, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and three dollars. In further raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in wages and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels in accordance with the most recent collective bargaining agreement. Notes, health and dental care premium increases are included in the main budget proposal. And so then it says the budget committee recommends this appropriation by a vote of, and then you take, again, yes, no, not here.
So. Oh, I have, I have a question. Um, is there any opportunity for additional wording or inclination? And at, at the, um, at the hearing, I asked about displaying the percentages, and at that time, it, it, you know, Joe had addressed that kind of verbally was not captured in the minutes, but is, is that normally not done for the um, bar, collective bargaining agreement?
It's not usually in the article, in the warrant article. It's not in the warrant article, because the D R A says what you can write in.
And so it doesn't matter. And it's not a percentage increase of salaries.
In the budget thing, the budget digest.
This is what we'll, uh, did you get a copy of that, the budget digest?
You sent it was being, um, Monday.
We don't know if I can, for the digest, I definitely can't.
And so that goes like to everyone, is that right, or it's?
It'll go to every, every, everybody. Yes. So that doesn't go on the ballot, but it will go on that yellow digest.
Well, you, you have to tell what the cost is for each year. That's sandburn, I believe. So then you just take your roll call vote and go wherever you like.
Okay.
I have a suggestion, sorry, nobody saw my hand.
Nope.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I see it now.
That's okay. So in New Hampshire, I think, and I may be wrong, but I'm gonna say this because my boards are pretty up on, uh, legissta- legislative requirements. Uh, in New Hampshire, if you've got members voting from Zoom, then you have to state your last name and what your vote is. So I'm sorry, it's labor intensive, because I'm not there and Steve's not there, and I apologize. Um, but we, you need to say your last name and then what your vote is. That way, if anybody is reviewing it or listening, uh, later, then they know who, who voted how.
Thanks, Jamie. All right, so you want to run your vote?
Yes, we're ready. Article two.
Uh, Aaron, no.
St. Pierre, yes. Alessio, yes.
Chapie, uh.
Marchese, no.
Barone, yes. Yes, Barone, yes.
Jamie, you're muted.
Jamie, you're muted.
It says unmuted now. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Okay, sorry. Teague, yes.
So that's six, two, is that right?
All right, school board. Alyssa?
Ask them, yes.
Levek, yes.
Yeah, Andrew, yes.
Vogel, yes.
And Jamie?
Teague, yes.
Seven, oh.
Seven, oh, okay, yeah.
Ours was five, two, and one, yes. It was six, oh, five, two.
So.
We still have a forum?
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, one, two.
They do three, four, okay, yeah.
They're up there tonight, so they count one.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're all. All right. So article three. Shall the Actworth voters vote to appropriate twenty-eight thousand for capital improvements to the Actworth Community Schools? What'd I say, the wrong number, sorry. Twenty-three, let me start again, I apologize. Shall the Actworth voters vote to appropriate twenty-three thousand dollars for capital improvements to the Actworth Community Schools to repaint, stain the exterior of the school with said funds come from the Actworth Schools Capital Reserve Fund.
There was discussion each time before, so anybody, anybody want to discuss that at all? Okay.
Aaron, yes.
St. Pierre, yes.
Chapie, yes.
Marchese, yes.
Barone, yes.
Then, let's see there, sorry.
All right, that's how the school board.
Well, that's the next.
Levek, yes.
Andrew, yes.
Keith, yes.
Vogel, yes.
Collins, yes.
Sorry.
And Jamie?
Yes.
Hey, article four. Shall the Langdon voters vote to appropriate thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars for capital improvements to Sarah Porter to install a new beach field with said funds to come from the Langdon School Capital Reserve Fund? Questions?
Is, um, that, the formatting is gonna work, so the article four is gonna be the one that I have, the article four is up on the page before, and then.
Yeah, I fixed the formatting.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna do that.
No, I did fix the formatting.
Ready?
Yep.
Aaron, yes.
St. Pierre, yes.
Chapie, yes.
Marchese, yes.
Barone, yes.
Teague, yes.
All right.
Ask them, yes.
Levek, yes.
Andrew, yes.
Keith, yes.
Vogel, yes.
Collins, yes.
Teague, yes.
Are you ready? Article five, capital improvement. Shelter District vote to raise and appropriate up to two hundred and fifty thousand to be placed in the high school district's capital reserve fund with said funds to come solely from any year-end unassigned general fund balance. These funds are to be held by the Charles Town Trustia Trust Funds, and no withdrawal shall be made without consent of the voters.
Questions, yes?
So in the hearing that we had, I asked if the, if you look at article four and article three, the capital reserve fund balances are added under the information of the warrant. I would greatly appreciate if, under information of warrant five, we could have the total of what is in the capital reserve fund for the high school.
Yes.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Yep.
Yeah.
I gave it to you, I just didn't add it on to the document.
Yeah, somewhere in there, it wasn't at like six or?
Yeah, six hundred.
And I know that we talked about this, because Misty brought it to my attention, that we did review it and we did discuss it. However, I don't ever recall saying that I agreed to have this put in.
Maybe you personally didn't. No, we did talk about it when we went through all of the articles, because that's when you, you writ large, took out the one for the special ed. And I think originally we had said five hundred thousand, if I remember correctly, for the high school, but that could be wrong, too.
Yeah, that's, I think that's right.
Yeah, and then when you're.
Yeah, I also don't remember us supporting this article during that meeting. And also, what is our current, uh, capital reserve, around six hundred thousand?
And we have a driveway to do.
Which is a million.
And there might be other members that don't recall this, or something as well.
This is a standard one we've done for years, except for one year, we didn't do it.
Well, one year, I'd do it out.
Right, that's what I mean, but all the other years that I've been around, we've done it. Usually it's a half a million.
Didn't, didn't last year, we just did it for the five towns?
That's what you did, right. You didn't, you excluded the high school last year, correct?
Because we have six hundred thousand dollars in.
Which isn't very much, sadly.
It isn't, but compared to like, if you're looking at a town such as Langdon, who only has so much money in their capital reserves, or you're looking at another town, and they don't, I mean, there's no other.
But Langdon has two rooms to their school. They don't have, uh, eighty, I don't, I'm not good with this, it's just super long driveway leading up to the thing, just deferred maintenance is always a problem.
So I have, um, a question regarding this for the future. If we know, um, I don't actually think a million dollars would be enough to pay at this parking lot, and, uh.
I just got a quote, so, I just got a quote.
That would make me very happy if it was a million dollars. I was thinking more towards, you know, one point two or three or five.
So what was the quote?
Nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, a little bit, give or take.
For, for both the road and the parking lot?
Yep.
Yeah. Wow.
Okay, so, um, my question is actually, why don't we look at getting a bond for that and paying a very, very low interest rate and getting it done without taking, um, this money and emptying the capital reserve? I, I see it as a better value for the taxpayers instead of taking it from them to let it sit, to tell them where we're spending it, exactly how much they're gonna need to know where it's coming out of their budget and not take it before we move in. That would involve a whole other year, because you'd have to do it next year, but.
We don't, we don't have enough funds, even if this was approved, that isn't enough. The six hundred thousand plus the two fifty isn't enough to cover the nine hundred thousand for the price tag, and I would, I would also agree with Alyssa in the sense of, even if there was, even if the two fifty was exactly enough with the six hundred thousand, you're absolutely depleting the whole capital reserves, which gives us absolutely no money inside that, which I'm sure that it took quite some time to get that amount of money in there, so I'd be very nervous, even if two fifty was approved, and even if we had an estimate for nine hundred, to deplete that whole thing in one lump sum. And if there was a possible way of holding off for a year and doing a bond or with a low interest rate, I would be absolutely on board with that.
Might I suggest? You know, you know, a bond is going to require a sixty percent vote, so it's harder to get. And of course, it's, it's not an all or nothing. You could appropriate, say, half a million dollars from your reserve fund and then raise the rest in the year in question. So, you know, it, it, it doesn't have to be uh all or nothing. And it doesn't have to be half and half. I mean, you can mix it any way you want uh and not deplete the fund. The other thing I'd be looking at is what's the interest rate on the bond versus what are you earning on the, on the idle cash? You know, if, if by chance there's an opportunity to actually make money, that's a different discussion. If you're going to lose money, it would seem foolish to me.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the other piece of that is, are we going to get a um statement from whoever takes care of these funds? So we can see what they've done in the last year because I got mine for Alstead and in the last two years, we've lost thirty-four thousand dollars in, in our capital reserve funds because the state is so restrictive on what you can invest in and what you can't invest in. Um, and I think that that would be a good inform, information for anybody in the district to see how these funds are actually doing.
Jamie has her hand up. Jamie?
Oh. Sorry, I just moved on the screen. I had to find myself. So a couple of things, just as a board member and somebody who's in this world right now. Interest rates are not low right now, okay? And they're raising them every quarter. Um, we just got an interest rate pro, projected for us for a bond for this year for a warrant article. Um, and they're for a twenty-year, you know, on a couple million. It's up in the three and a half to four percent range. Um, they're not good. They're not coming in good at the bond bank very, very much either. Uh, the other thing that, that I was gonna say, and it just went out of my head, hold on one second. Was that if you're losing money on your investments as a town or a school district, then I would suggest you put your money in P DIP, New Hampshire Public Deposit Investment. Um, we are earning, you know, money. We've, we've not had any losses. We are, we're taking in money every month. Um, so, you know, just a thought. But I do concur with Steve that um, you don't, it doesn't have to be all or nothing, right? You can finance things in, in a multitude of ways. It's a matter of how you word it when you put it on to ask to spend it. The other thing is just answering the comment somebody made about uh it took a long time to get six hundred thousand there. It actually doesn't. If we're giving back a million five every year, the way we used to do it, at a half a million, that's two years to have a million dollars in there. So it's all in what this board decides to ask to redirect from surplus funding. Um, or unfunded, you know, un- um funds that are remaining. Um, so just a couple of thoughts. Yeah, I would not, I would not want to borrow to do this project. It's expensive. It's expensive unless you're willing to pay it off really fast. Well, then if we're saying we're raising two hundred and fifty thousand to go inside the capital reserves for paving, then maybe we should say that. But I don't want to get too far off on this. I don't recall having the, the approval of the two hundred and fifty. There's other board members that don't recall that. This is the only article that we have come up on so far where there are board members who are saying, eh, I don't recall this. So I would like the school board when we recommend something, that we recommend something together. If in fact, it's so easy to raise six hundred thousand dollars, then I would prefer that we not put the two hundred and fifty thousand in this year and to continue discussions next year on what we want to do and how we want to do it.
Well, my concern would be that if we um if we don't put the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this year, then we're then, then we, we're that far, we, we're that far behind. Uh, I don't want, I don't think it's a good idea to be going in, to be taking, I don't agree with taking out a loan. I don't think that we're going to get a bond passed. Um, the, the interest rates are going up and I don't, I, I have not seen a bond pass um, in this district. Um, I've, I've been here first a long time and I haven't seen a bond pass.
Yeah, we have.
A few when I was on the, when I sat in the BAC.
It was a lot of work.
We talked about in the um withdrawal committee, what, two, two, three years ago, whenever that was.
Go ahead, Mary. Uh, I'm going to say that you're looking at a big surplus again this year, probably at the end of the year. And my problem with a big surplus, and I'm sure Jamie understands this, is that our tax rate is going to keep bouncing around. We gave one point five million back the year before, a million back last year because we put a half a million into surplus, into trust funds. I really, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now is still going to give you a huge surplus at the end of the year. And what's going to happen is this next year in our budget, it's lower. We are not going to have probably the surplus that we, I hope we don't have the surplus that we've been having. Because if you go back on our surpluses and how much we've had, like when we spoke about at the last meeting, they were never this high until COVID. So two hundred and fifty thousand, I, I'm, I'm really would like to see you put that in there. Um, to give you an update though, real quick, that we did transfer the five hundred thousand into the other funds. Charleston now has four hundred and ten thousand in their funds. Um, Acworth has ninety-one, Alstead has ninety-eight, Langdon has ninety-six, Walpole has three hundred and forty-three. So again, um, high school's six hundred and two, because we didn't cha, it didn't change because we didn't put any in this year. Um, I would strongly urge you to put two hundred and fifty thousand in. That's just, I mean, I, I don't want to take a bond if we don't have to because I've seen how much interest those can cost.
I think, I think Alyssa was just, she was throwing the bonding out there. I don't think she was.
Yeah.
Certainly, I don't. And you bet she was sitting there going, let's do a bond today. I think she was just using that as, as something else. Um, I totally get what you're saying. I, I think it, I think for board members to question why this is on here the night we're taking the vote.
Well, to be honest, I do remember us talking about it.
Okay.
So I, I remember us talking about it. I, I don't have the notes in front of me, so I don't remember exactly. I'm, but I remember us talking about it. I remember there was a lot of back and forth and there were people that wanted the same discussion of wanting it to come on. But I do remember us talking about it and I believe that we ended up taking money off, but that we left it on. That's what I remember. Yeah.
Hi, Sarah. Could I ask a question?
Yes, you can. Sorry, I didn't see your hand.
That's okay. Procedurally, just a question. So whether we said yes or no to putting this on, we still have the ability if we wanted, if, if, if and, and I don't remember if that meeting was taped or not, where we can go back and actually watch it to confirm whether or not we said yes, let's put it on, and no, don't put it on. Um, regardless, I think we have the ability to still put it on tonight, even if we hadn't, correct, Misty?
Yes.
Thank you. So.
Presented at the budget hearing, so it's.
Okay.
We can't, we can't make it any more than it is.
Right. Got it.
You can keep it on.
Thank you. So if you take a vote and if half of the board doesn't want to do it, then vote no. Right?
I mean, I think we can, right. I mean, if, I think we can still take it off. We just can't add anything.
Correct.
I think if they decided tonight that they did not want to bring this forward, I think maybe you take a vote that you don't want to move it forward or leave it on, kind of a thing at first.
And I'll go on the record that I would like to keep it on.
Okay. Is there more discussion on this or? Oh, I'm sorry, Andy didn't see your hand.
I'm right in your line.
I, you know, this article says nothing about a parking lot or driveway or anything like that. It's basically if this board is in favor of trust funds, capital reserve funds or not. Uh, I am, okay? I just I just am. There's, there's a multitude of things that need to be done at this school besides paving. And there's a multitude of reverberations that could crop up with heavy wet snow and stuff like that. You just, you just never know. So I, I'm for it.
So. Okay. Any other, any other discussion? Alright.
Is there an actual motion on the table right now? Like what's happening?
No, we're, we're discussing. Oh, yes. Does the budget committee? And do your vote?
Sure. Aaron, yes?
Misty?
Just procedurally, I thought we were having a discussion whether or not we're leaving the warrant article on here and if they're making.
There's no motion for that.
There was no, there was, we were just discussing it.
Okay, but do we want to have a motion to decide whether or not we want to leave this article on before we, everybody takes a vote as to whether or not they support it? Is my question. Does that make sense? If there's.
That makes sense.
Okay.
There was.
I know there wasn't one on there. I'm just suggesting that maybe if people feel very strongly that we maybe put a motion on the table to decide whether or not we want to leave this article on before we take a vote to support it or not.
I guess the other question, we've reviewed the question. Is anyone willing to make a motion to strike Article five?
If we want a discussion, I'll make a motion to strike Article five.
Is there a second?
Is this for the board only?
Yes.
Alright, there is no second way. It's, but it's.
Yep, sounds good. Thank you.
Now. Budget committee?
Aaron, yes?
Saint Pierre, yes?
Teague, yes.
Marchesi, no.
Verone, yes?
Teague, yes.
Alright. School board?
Bascom, no.
Levek, yes?
Andrew, yes.
Keith, yes.
Vogel, yes?
Collins, yes.
Teague, yes.
Alright. So. I believe that that, that ends the part that the budget committee has to vote on. We still need to go through six and seven and see. And I'll change the order. I'll do seven, six. But make sure the school board recommends the wrong.
Good. Six, seven, eight, nine.
Well, eight and nine are contingent, so we don't, I don't think we weigh in on this one.
Can we ask questions about them when we get to them? Because I do have to ask them.
It says that we, we recommend it or not.
I, I, I put it on that, that we don't. And so I put it on there as a placeholder, but I wanted to have a conversation. So historically.
We brought it up at the deliberative.
Yeah.
We discussed at the deliberative.
Yeah, historically, the board has not taken a position on petition articles. It doesn't mean you can't. Just historically, we haven't. So.
I would love to take a position on petition articles. Um, I know that select boards do. And I, and I know his, I know we don't, I know the board doesn't usually. But that's just my opinion. But I don't want to get bogged down in that stuff, so.
Can we start with six, which is seven?
Yeah.
Amend Articles of Agreement. Shall the voters of the Fallmount Regional School District vote to amend Article three in the district's Articles of Agreement to add the bolded language and to remove the language that is crossed out below. Three, as amended on March sixth nineteen seventy-six. See appendix for original language. The Fallmount Regional School District shall be responsible for grades bolded is now pre-K through twelve. Elementary schools will be maintained in Acworth, Alstead, North Charleston has been struck through, Charleston, Langdon, North Walpole has been struck through, and Walpole, semicolon, but before future action in transferring another grade from one town to another be taken, meetings be held by the school board in the town concerned with the transfer. Two-thirds majority vote required. And then the board can discuss and then just has to decide recommend or don't recommend.
We're doing that tonight?
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, we are.
Yeah, we have to do all of them. Yeah, the school board has to.
Oh, that's right. And then, but. Sorry.
I believe it's optional for the budget committee too. Not mandatory because it's not a money article, but I believe it's optional.
Alright.
I would want to support it.
Do you have any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Where it says meetings be held by the school when uh one, transferring one grade from one town to another.
That's when they.
Can we do that under our apportionment formula?
I think they did that when they did the North Walpole, the Walpole, uh Charleston to North Walpole. And when they transferred, um, Acworth, they transferred grades down to Alstead.
Yeah.
When we didn't have enough kids. Yeah, Andy, when you look at the assessment breakdown, that's why there's an interschool district uh tuition rate as opposed to a regular stated rate.
So.
Go ahead.
If the school board, the school board would make a decision to transfer, like just, just per se, one grade to, from Walpole to Charleston, then who pays for that grade? Walpole or Charleston?
Not like, I don't think it meant like.
It's the town who owns the children.
Wait, what?
It would be the town, the town would pay the other school district, the other town, uh whoever, whoever owns the students.
Okay.
Yeah, we, Acworth pays Alstead for our kids to go to, to Alstead.
Yeah, it would be the same type of situation.
So, but.
And that's the original language that it's been in.
But the, when Charleston, the fifth graders came to North Walpole, that was before our new apportionment formula.
That has nothing to do with the new apportionment formula. It has to do with other articles within the Articles of Agreement, but not as it relates to the apportionment formula. And if you're just moving one grade, you just need to conduct a hearing. It's a formality. And regardless of what you hear at the hearing, the board is still able to do whatever it wishes to do. If you're looking to close a school, that's a whole nother story.
No, I'm just caught up on the transferring grade. I don't remember. I just I'm, I just wonder who's responsible for the money, if it costs more or less. If the board makes a decision to transfer a grade from one town to another, somebody pays more or less.
The town that's, they're transferring those kids from is going to pay to the other town tuition.
Okay.
Assuming it's into town. I mean, you could be moving children from North Charleston to Charleston. There'd be no tuition because it's all Charleston. And you'd still be able to do it as long as you didn't close the building.
Right now, um, grades, what is it? Five, five, six, seven and eight from both Acworth and um Langdon are transferred to the Violets Middle School. And there's a tuition for that.
But if you transfer from North Walpole to Walpole, there would be no tuition because it's still in the same town. So you could decide to move your fifth graders.
Jennifer, Jennifer, you have to.
Wasn't the intention that we could decide which school they would go to and not, not necessarily moving grades to different towns?
No.
That original discussion that we had and we talked about maybe combining grades or but within the.
Was it individuals?
Without it, within a school, the school district, still.
No.
It wasn't, you mean individuals?
Striking this language, I thought the intent was that if, if we are able to combine students within, into another school building, it's the, to get rid of the requirement that there be a physical building in North Charleston and North Walpole. We weren't talking about moving grades between towns. I think that's covered in other parts of the agreement.
That's not what's, that's, that, this, what we're talking about is, is language that's been in there already.
I know, but I thought the intent of changing it was.
No, it had nothing to do with the budget committee or any of the discussions.
No, it didn't.
Concerning that.
No, she's not.
No, it was.
She's not talking about the budget committee.
I'm not talking about the budget committee. I thought it was to give the towns an option that they don't have to have a school physically located in North Walpole or North Charleston. But the way that reads, because it says you can move grades to other towns, it, it's it sounds like that's a different intention than was originally brought up.
It's all in the same article though, Jennifer. And that's the article that was there. And that's the article that was there before. And so what this one is trying to do, right now, it says there must be a school in every single village, town. All this article does is cross out two of the villages. The rest of it, the exact same thing as before. So they've always had this issue of if someone transfers a grade from one town to another, a hearing must take place. And then they make their choice. So the purpose of the change is just to remove those two words, more or less. We added.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, and that's what it does.
So basically, there, there's a, there's a school in every township, if you will, you know, Charlestown, Walpole, yeah. I understand that. I think, um, Andy's question.
My question, there's a bigger problem with the original article. I understand that now. But when Alstead sent their kids to Walpole, the town lost almost two million dollars in tax revenue.
For sure.
And I don't see the board forcing a grade from one town to another anytime in the future.
Probably wouldn't be great to do.
Yeah, and, and when we, when Alstead was actually sending kids to Walpole, that was back prior to two thousand and six.
I know, they were great.
That I was here. Well, the district was still paying all of that money.
Right, but the enforcement changed.
Yeah, but if I, it did, it did. We lost and, and that's why they call them lost Alstead, that whole section of town. And the, uh, um, the, the idea was though, I mean, the district made, made, it made sense then. Those schools were physically closer to that part of town than our own schools. I mean, so we didn't have to.
Do I understand that? I've lived here.
So.
All right.
Yeah, other questions?
Yeah, we got it. Okay. So.
I would like to take a vote of my board on whether, uh, the majority feels we should make a recommendation on this.
Okay.
I have a motion to for the sake of discussion, a motion to
Just take a straw poll of your members if they want to.
Steve says yes, Jennifer?
Yes.
Yes. Erin, yes?
Okay. We will take a position.
All right, now. You want to do your vote?
Uh, can we check on Jamie?
I think she disappeared.
Hold on. She's still online.
Oh, she is.
Because her voice is bad.
All we have is Steve's face. Which is lovely.
Jamie, are you there? No. I don't think she's there. Just apparated.
He's still up in the door.
Hold on, I'm here. What's the matter? I'm sorry, I had to feed cats.
Oh.
I'm trying to listen from the kitchen. I could have brought my computer with me, but the cats are like not happy because I ran in and sat down at the computer. Yes, we have cats in Queechee. Okay? Um, so the question was about whether or not I, you guys think that the uh, Budget Committee should have a position on this article, correct?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think the article should be on there. So whether you want to have a, have a, have a, uh, position on it, I think it's fine either way. It's good. Yes. Teague, yes?
Marone, yes?
Okay, well, I said yes to motion.
The straw.
Now you want.
A straw poll. Now, now we're, so we're going to take a position. Do you recommend Article?
Six.
Six as stated.
As stated, yes.
Yeah, Erin, yes?
Saint Pierre, yes?
K P, yes.
Marquesi, yes?
Marone, yes?
Teague, yes?
Uh, formality, you just voted on Article seven, no?
No, but as stated, because we switched the order, right?
Yeah.
Back to the original.
Yeah.
Yes.
The new, the new article said.
Yeah.
Right. Taking my.
Article of Agreement number three.
Yeah, so then the school.
Okay. School Board?
LeRac, yes?
Andrews, yes?
Keith, yes?
Vogel, yes?
Colin, yes?
Teague, yes?
All right. Okay, can we try to live through seven, six, which is now seven, okay?
Now we get to watch Jamie's. Which might be more entertaining than listening to the actual article.
All right, you're, my feelings now, okay? Amended Articles of Agreement, number six, seven. Shall the voters of the Fallmount Regional School District vote to amend Article eighteen of the district's Articles of Agreement to add the bolded language and remove the language that is crossed out below? Eighteen is amended on March thirteenth, two thousand and seven. See appendix for original language. The district agrees that a future warrant article proposing any of the following acquisition of land, construction of a new school, where footage additions to existing schools, major renovations or repairs as determined by the school board, appropriations to or withdrawals from any elementary capital reserve fund established in two thousand and six. This is the bolded part, closure of North Walpole or North Charlestown School. This is the crossed out part, the cost of such expenditure to be apportioned exclusively to one town slash pre-existing district. Ends the crossed out. Shall be passed or defeated on the basis of votes tallied only in the identified town slash pre-existing district. This is the bolded part. With any appropriation for expenditures to be apportioned exclusively to any such town slash pre-existing district and bolded part. Any vote taken under such an article shall be considered a vote of the district. And any expense approved under such an article shall be considered an appropriation of the district in accordance with our R S A one ninety-five colon fourteen supplemental. This article shall be none, null and void if the district subsequently changes the manner in which it apportions capital expenses. Two-thirds majority vote required.
All right. I have one request. Is if we could add the sentence that we have on Article six in the, in the information. Again, can we repeat that last sentence? Well, the sentence says removing that requirement does not mean schools will be closed in this location. It just means the requirement. Well, can we reword that so it fits for this one, too?
Can you change that in the Budget Digest?
To change, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Say some sentence that, that, I'd say we are not closing those schools.
Yeah, well, yeah, Misty. How about just these changes do not mean or does not?
It looks like anything else. It also doesn't mean that we're requiring land or anything, so. But yes, I think so.
Yeah, we'll have to figure out how you want to word that.
It's only ask, it's important to the Digest to do something.
Is it possible to make it simpler and just say construction or closure of a school?
You mean in the, in the digest?
No, I mean in general, where.
I mean, like the second bullet point in this article that says construction of a new school.
I, I, my guess would be no, because the construction of the new school could take place in any locality. I think, I, I don't know, I'm not an attorney, but I think it would confuse the issue because it's construction of a new school in any, but it's only the closure of those two.
But would it not defer to the language of the other article? In understanding that it would be those schools able to be closed? If this were to state closure of any school?
You still have to maintain the five, one in each of five towns.
We have to maintain there has to be one in each of the five towns.
Yes, yes.
It just, I think it takes away the fear, uh, that people are feeling that there's already going to be a closure and there's already a plan in place and all of a sudden they're going to lose that school. Um, when you see it, um, folded out just like that.
So, construction of, of a new school or the closure of any school within the district? That might be possible. I mean, I think we'd have to make sure the attorney was
Yeah, remember, we can't, after tonight, we can't change this.
So, everything's getting posted.
We're not going to be able.
Right.
We're not going to be able to talk to legal.
Yeah. I guess I would just go with it as it is and vote your conscience.
Sure. But you can, you can put information down in that information.
Correct.
You can say anything you want to say in there for the Budget Digest.
Yeah, I, I agree that I think we need to.
Can we, can you give us some direction on what you want that language to say?
Yeah, something like this, like Alyssa just said.
Can you give us some direction?
No current plan to close any school.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. A simple statement like that.
The same, you just want me to repeat the same sentence at the end?
Well, it says we're not removing something, so addition of this language does not mean that the schools will be closed in these locations.
Yeah, that does it.
I don't know if the layperson is going to read it that way.
They might mean that it means they'll never be closed. Doesn't mean that either. So, I think we'll figure it out.
I like, I, I, I like the addition of that last sentence.
In the Budget Digest, we think put in whatever we would like.
We bold that too, so it matches the bold.
Guaranteed closure.
Imminent?
Right.
So what you said.
I said, doesn't guarantee closure.
No, not at all.
Right, so.
We have attorneys in the room.
But there was guaranteed. Right.
There we go.
Doesn't mean imminent closure.
Since, since this is on the warrant, I'm assuming the board wants this to pass. And, uh, which still begs the question then because we're much closer to potentially closing North Charleston than closing North Walpole, I'm wondering why you would do both of them at the same time needing two-thirds of the vote, because that's two places of opposition as opposed to one place of opposition. It may seem a little manipulative perhaps, but if you're trying to get it to pass, you need to structure it in such a way that it will pass. And, uh, I don't know if there's opposition in North Charleston. I don't know if there's opposition in North Walpole. But it would seem to me, looking at the situation, if you're going to close one in the, in the near future, it's going to be North Charleston, not North Walpole. Just because of the amount of students that have to be moved is, is quite different. Um, so you, you might want to consider leaving North Walpole out just for this year and then come back around next year as a housekeeping matter and do the same thing with North Walpole.
My fear is when you separate them, then people are going to see it as a movement to, to close North Charlestown, and I don't think it's it's factual to say that we're closer to closing North Charlestown than we are to North Walpole. I think it gives towns the option of doing what, what what they want to do or what they feel is best to do, and it may not be this year, next year, it may be six years down the road. But, um, I, I would be extremely concerned about just putting Charlestown in there one year and then just putting Walpole in there the, the following year.
I have a question pretty much for the board, I guess, but does, does it make sense to do the one we just said, right? The removal of the two towns? And then the following year, then you'll have the language that could say, you know, the acquisition of, uh, construction of a new school or closure of any building in any district, you know, town or whatever. And if you have no intention of immediately doing that, then you probably could take the year if you wanted it.
It was my understanding that these, that the attorneys said these had to go in hand in hand.
To get the closure part. Because you had to remove the requirement that they existed in the town, but if you remove that requirement this year, then the following year, you could say any school closure could be, you know, done only in the town, whatever, whatever.
That's if the board doesn't back burner it again for another four years.
Don't know the answer to that.
Well, Misty's still going to be here next year, right? So she'll make sure we keep an eye on what's on.
Go ahead. Hi, might there be an opportunity by way of explanation to, um, put some alternate wording, wording in to, to explain that this gives the district the flexibility to combine schools or combine grades or you know, to, to get away from this idea of emphasizing closure. Um.
That can already occur.
Right. I'm looking for is, is to give towns the opportunity to. Tell me a little more. Right, and, and you have more flexibility. So the first one, we already talked about getting rid of the, the wording for North Walpole or North Charlestown. Right?
They're strict.
They're strict.
Stricken, right. And so then this one, you, it said in order to make people feel that it's not imminent um, to add some language saying it's not imminent and it's just provides flexibility for the district.
For the Digest, have that.
Yes.
From what I'm understanding, there is no need that this be done this year. Taking into consideration what Steve said and what other comments have been made, I would make a motion to strike this article for this year completely from the warrant.
Uh, do you have that authority? This isn't a budget.
And, and I do not have the authority, but the board does. No, that's, that's, it would be my recommendation that this be struck from the warrant.
Are you talking about just Article seven, Gabe?
Yes, yes. You could, you could take smaller bites, get it over time, get the wording correct next year to, and that, that it may say closure of any, any school or building. But if they need to be done both by putting them both on this year, I believe it fails. If it can be done one at a time this year and then next year, and it does not affect the timeline, that may be four or five years down the line, I believe we need to take a longer approach to this and strike this article from the warrant.
Doing your adding, doing your motion?
I would make that motion. Exactly what he just said. And give us one more year to, you know, discuss it and discuss it with the administration so that they're not feeling the pressure of it as well. Because we don't want to set ourselves up to fail, and there's a lot of articles on here.
Okay, I need a second. So, for discussion?
I just have a question, and this is probably for Sheldon. Is how many do you think? How fast do you, if we can get these two things passed, how fast do you think?
It's, it's not about fast. It's, it's, my fear is that it is taken, how long ago was the withdrawal? So, three years ago, and we have finally now started to discuss the warrant, the Articles of Agreement. My fear is that and, and I do understand everybody's point in wanting to get at least one of these passed. But my fear is that next year is going to come and go and this board won't address it again. So, that's all. I don't, I don't have a timeline for anything. I, I don't know what the voters are going to do. I don't, I don't even know if the voters are going to approve one of them. The point is to give some the whole point in this is to give some of that authority back to the voters and make them feel as if or, or give them the ability to start making some of these decisions instead of always having the board or the, or the district feel like they're doing it. That's all this is about. Is if they voted down, then they voted down, and then, then we move on. And, and if the administration has other ideas about those schools, then let's move forward. But this is really about just giving voters the opportunity and make decisions. That's all this is. And I really hope that moving forward, this board does more of this. Because if you're going to say to people that you have control over your pre-K through eight, they should truly have control over their K through eight. Truly, and they don't. And I think that's also evident in one of the petition articles and why that came up. I think people just feel like there is no real control. And we can give that back to them by amending some of these Articles of Agreement that we all know needs to be worked on. We never have enough time. I agree a hundred percent. It's never enough days. But it needs to be worked on, little by little. So.
So I have, uh, several points.
So I have several points um. To Kevin's point. There really is quite a long process, and we've been talking about a lot at the site-based committee in Charleston, we've, uh, over the last three years. That talk about making site-based committees more um, present and active in regards to reporting to the board and that kind of thing, and so. In Charleston, we've talked about what it would take to close a school and combine. Everybody onto one campus and all these things, and it is a fairly long process. We don't have the room right now, and so what it would do would be. Um, looking at all of our enrollment, whether it's going up or down, and what our space is, and then looking at um. Building aid that the state has brought back, and then, and that's a through-year process. You have to tell them you might be interested, then you have to, you know. Put the plan together, and then they have to approve you, then you have to take it to the voters, and so it is a really long process, so. We definitely have time to wait on this, if that's how we choose. I hear what Shelley's saying, the communities have been talking, they want change, they want. A forward motion on some of these things, and this is a really great way to do it. Um, to give people that sense that they. Still have their community schools, and we're not just some big top-heavy administrative unit that we're all, you know, under. That being said, I do hesitate with separating out two individual locations. I would still. Um, like to see it say any or all, that's only my own opinion on that. So my third point is, I really like the word flexibility. I would love to see um, if we do decide to move forward with this. Article on the warrant, the wording to say to the community, this offers the towns flexibility. In how they want their schools made up, so.
Could only say that in the budget digest, right?
You know, one of the big things we did talk about at our last site-based meeting was how to get the word out about these things and do PR. And one of those things is through the budget digest, and then having conversations about this really does give you the flexibility to decide where your children go. And how you make up your own pattern, so.
Just a, a question, on this budget digest, you just purpled something out, cut it, is six and seven. Where they need to be?
Um, so.
I, I think on mine they are. I have the acquisition of land one under seven. And that's the motion that we're looking at taking off?
Correct.
So I move the, I move the question.
So the discussion's over?
No.
That's what the question means, right?
I, I, I take that.
Yeah, cuz I have my hand up.
But go ahead, Gabe, ladies first.
Oh, well, thank you, Andy, appreciate that. So I made the motion to bring it to the table for further discussion. I know we've discussed it numerous times, it feels like we still have some uh doubts. Good, good question, I, I could, a good word, I think, some doubts on how it's written, and how maybe it could be made. Better, clearer, um, you know, whatever that word is. But I also agree that we need to set aside more time in the upcoming year, and I, and I think that. We've got a board, Sands, Andy, that are all gonna try to return, and so I think we haven't had some continuity over the past couple of years. And that's been detrimental to trying to make progress on things like that. Um, so I think if we're all making the commitment to come back. That we should be able to set aside some more meeting dates out of our busy schedules, cuz believe me. I met with the Budget Committee a million times, and I have a very busy schedule too. I think we can figure out. How to carve out some time to work on the Articles of Agreement. To bring them into the twenty whatever century, we're in twenty-first century, twenty-second century, I don't know where we are. Anyway, that's just my thought, and, and uh, however it goes, I'm in, you know, it's okay.
So uh, I want to agree with Shelley on bringing both of these forward. And the reason is, is that I'm not a fan of changing things in the eleventh hour. It's. We've been aware that this was coming as two pieces, so we knew about it. And I, I mean, two thirds of a vote is hard to get, no matter what, one article or two articles, it doesn't matter. But the public is gonna show us what direction they wanna go in. But the bigger comment I have is what Alyssa alluded to, and that is that the digest isn't the only way we get the word out. There's a million ways. Every town has a newsletter, every school has a newsletter, Facebook, the interweb, all that stuff. You can explain your heart out to what this means, so it's, it's easy. It's, it doesn't all have to be written right here. So I, I, I recommend that we go forward too, but I will follow will and board.
I will follow suit with Andy as well.
So.
The new article seven. Our seven, we need number eighteen.
Yeah, number eighteen.
So I wanna just clarify, a yes vote means we take it out, and a no vote means we. Keep it in, correct. All right, are you ready?
All right.
Well, I think the Budget Committee.
Not on this motion.
If we leave it in, then they will say if they, they approve it or don't. Okay, but we're deciding if we're gonna leave it in or not. A yes vote takes it out. Alyssa, fast on, no.
Rebecca, no.
She has to watch the last.
Oh, she has to do that. Okay, I'm waiting.
Collins, no.
Teague, no.
I, Andrews, no.
Do we have a tie or?
Yeah, so basically, you're leaving.
So saying yeah. That's how everybody understands.
So now you can take a vote on whether you recommend or not, starting with uh.
And then I'd like a little more discussion on what we actually wanna put in the information, cuz it's your information to put in, just as long as you're aware that you cannot. It's information, and it can't be leading in a direction. That's really important because it's. Or discourage somebody's position on it, you're just basically.
So Budget Committee, you want to?
Saint Pierre, yes.
Aaron, yes. I do, do have a comment though. Voter is going to see the bolded logic, voter North Walpole or North Charleston. Then I'm gonna read anything else on this warrant, and it's not for that.
KZ, yes.
Marquesi, yes.
Verone, yes.
We're support, we're voting whether we support it, right? Okay, I just wanted not to be confused and say no. Yes. I'm very sorry, but I haven't actually not had lunch today, okay? I had breakfast at seven AM making snow calls.
Time to take a shower.
Hey, that's kinda personal.
She's sharing.
I haven't, okay? Don't shower here.
Can I say yes with, I'm still very, still concerned, but yeah, that's a important.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Over, yes.
Colin, yes.
There you go.
I said yes twice, team, yes.
I, I think we should just leave the information on the warrant as is, with the addition that you put in there. I think if we. It is what it is, and if we keep, if you add too much, you're. I tend to agree that the minute someone reads the closure. That that's what they're going to read, and no matter what we put in that information, it's gonna be their perception. I think we just need to do a very good job at the deliberative. To try to get as much information out there, more than what this means and what the, what the intent.
Yeah, we really.
And I think we need to get across our intent, not so much. Whether we agree or not agree, but why we chose to put that on there to give the voter. An option, a choice.
Yes, ma'am, is it, I don't know if it's possible for us to write some sort of. VR articles that can go out to, you know, our town in Charleston, and they're all pulling in things prior to the deliberative?
I wrote a lot of letters to the editor, listen.
Yeah.
In the past.
Nobody reads them anymore. I read them.
On Facebook, you could just put, dear editor.
It can be electioneering. You cannot do any electioneering, so whatever.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand, it's like, where's that line?
It gets very shady, so some people in some towns. Will get up and say, I'm taking off my school board hat, now I'm citizen Joe, Sergeant, and this is what I'm saying. It's a little different.
It's not electioneering, though, to say that an article does not guarantee closing a school.
As long as you're explaining.
Just information if you're giving, providing information, you can do that.
I could go home tonight, write something up, send it to you, we could all kind of look at it, because I know deadlines are, are. Weird in terms of trying to get something in time, and it's appropriate time and not have it show up in the newspapers after.
I have a suggestion. Something we, um, you, you also can put information, which we did do when Charleston was doing the withdrawal, we did put information. Like an information sheet in the annual report, and it was just information, it was. That, that could be an option. You could do a write-up from the school board that explains kind of where you're coming from with the article without going.
Because I think people do need to know that it, it comes from a good place, but it's not looking to change people's lives and. Is there still a hearing on Monday, too, about this?
Yes, it has to be. So that's another opportunity also to tell people, they come.
Thank you.
I think you have fulfilled your task.
If, if we choose not to.
Talk about the petition.
Petitions.
That's true.
Gabe, I would like to make a recommendation on the petition articles, if that's the, the pleasure of the full bu- budget committee.
So noted.
So Article eight, which is by petition. Shall the voters of the Fall Mountain Regional School District vote to rescind the statutory budget committee? And establish an advisory budget committee under the provisions of RSA thirty-two colon twenty-four. With seven members to be abhorring, sorry, by the school board to serve for one-year terms. That's a petition warrant, that's just what it does.
Um, I would just like to say here in public that. I second everything that's been said about the Budget Committee and what they've done this year. I don't think we could have. Uh, moved as far in one year as we did this year, knowing it's in the budget, looking at it objectively. Without having a statutory budget committee, and as a school board member, I would like to put our support under that. To tell the communities that, um, that we support the work they did.
So you would not, so if the board did it, what you're saying, you would not recommend?
Oh, no, I, I would not recommend petition article.
The other thing I really felt was that um, by having the Budget Committee. It gave us time to be able to spend time talking about the Articles of Agreement, it gave us time to spend time talking, you know. If, I mean, otherwise, all of, of, other years, all of our time in the fall is taken up with doing the budget.
So we need a motion, we need a motion to ask the school board if they wanna um. If I make a motion that the board, that we include, the board recommends this article, why not, or not?
I will second it.
Could we amend that to petition article number nine as well? Yes, we may get one motion.
So you'll take a position on both?
I, I, I think it's important for the, for the school to take positions on petition articles. I would have liked to have done that last year. I think that, that, I'm sure there's other boards in the past that would have liked to have had that opportunity. I just get, I think it gives the voters an opportunity to see where the board sits with.
Oh, I just remembered last year's article.
Oh, I had that, I got that out of my mind.
Is there more discussion on that?
Um, I, I agree with Shelby. We should always do these.
Okay. All right, so.
To clarify, a yes vote means you support?
No.
No.
Oh, you want just to vote?
Just, we're gonna vote that we now, that, that this is added here, I'm not, they're gonna vote on whether we support it.
Um, fast on, yes.
Rebecca, yes.
Andrews, yes. Keith, yes. Vogel, yes. Collins, yes.
Teague, yes.
And.
Now we can.
Now you can say.
May I just ask a question, just to clarify, that it is legal? Have we checked with legal, cuz it, it could be on that final round of electioneering, whether you support or, or do not support a.
I, I did ask the question, and I, it's, it's the curfew of the board, whether or not they want to, yeah.
Thank you.
So on the motion, a no vote means we.
Not recommend.
Yes. Rebecca, radically no.
We still don't have it.
We need the motion, right?
Why is she looking at us?
No, no, your fault, your fault, your fault, mine. I said, so we're ready to vote, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Rebecca, no.
Andrews, no.
Keith, no.
Vogel, no.
Teague, no.
So oh, seven.
Like to note that that speaks volume, because on the warrant last year, it was not supported by the school board.
On the warrant last year, we didn't, we didn't, we weren't, we didn't do this.
No, you didn't.
We were gonna speak about it at the deliberative, and what happened is that really long petition article took over the whole thing. Hours on end.
And we were all done, and.
Yeah.
In our own session?
Can I go to number nine?
The straw poll by short hands, uh, Budget Committee, who wishes to sh- show a recommendation for Article eight and Article nine. In favor? Good, we will take a position. Any further discussion? You ready to vote?
Aaron, no.
Saint Pierre, no.
Shaking, no.
Marquesi, no.
Verone, no.
Teague, no.
As written anyway.
Yeah.
You know, as, as it's written, I would vote no. If they had said. Selectmen rather than the board appoint the members of an advisory committee, I might have felt differently, but as written, no.
Yeah, no, thank you. Luckily, she's taking the notes. Well, we'll do it together, it'll be fine. All right, Article nine, by petition. To see if the voters of the town of Walpole will direct the school board of the Fall Mountain Regional School District to undertake a study. Of the feasibility and suitability of the withdrawal of Walpole District from the cooperative district. In accordance with RSA one ninety-five, section twenty-five, the study shall be conducted by a committee. composed of at least one member of the school board from each of the pre-existing districts, one member of the Board of Selectment from each town, and such other members as may be appointed by the committee. Within a hundred and eighty days of the date of formation, the committee shall report its findings to the State Board of Education, there is no cost to this study.
And that's where this is false, because there is a cost. Even if this group was to formulate and meet at this library, every single whatever, there is a cost. There is a cost of electricity, there's a cost of paper, there's a cost of people's times, there's a cost of possibly Misty's insanity. Uh, there's a cost.
There's already been depreciated.
I do not, I do not.
Depreciate.
Listen, so I, that was totally a joke, and you know, I, you know where I stand with you. So I'm just saying, I think it's absolutely um ashamed that who whoever wrote this would put that there is no cost to this study since we just went through this with a study with Charles Town and we know exactly how much this costs. And it costs a heck of a lot more than nothing.
A whole lot more than nothing, yeah.
Aside from the cost, is it even possible to put an article on the Fall Mountain School District warrant that says the voters of the town of Walpole will?
I, you know. Put anything on a petition or article, it doesn't mean that it's viable, so just keep that in mind.
So if it's not viable, does that mean it doesn't matter how people vote?
Correct.
Okay.
Did you just say it's not viable? No, we did not.
I didn't say that.
Are we having conversation about it now?
I just have a question about it.
So I have a statement, I have a statement to go along with Shelley's statement. So I guess I wish that the voters and or the people who may have supported this article would try to think in terms that are more productive to work together as a district of all the people and stop trying to pull us apart. It's, it's just, it's disheartening, I guess. Um, when we have these many meetings and people don't show up and or write articles until they hear something they don't like. So that's my, that's my opinion, my personal opinion as an at-large member on the school board.
Yeah. All right. So.
Vote to recommend or not?
Do you recommend or not that you recommend? Bassam, no.
Rebecca, absolutely not.
Andrews, no. Keith, no. Vogel, no.
Collins, no.
Teague, no.
I would.
Budget Committee.
I would question whether um if we were to vote on whether to put a, put anything on from the Budget Committee, I would vote not to, because it's just the way I feel at this point, I'd, I would rather not myself, but if the will of the committee is to put a recommendation on.
I think it would be seen odd that the Budget Committee voted or recommended all of their articles but this one.
Right, yeah. I have a question.
I would wanna vote.
Is, is this in?
So noted, Steve.
With the Articles of Agreement?
No.
No. So saying that Walpole voters will have exclusively, or they're gonna the, the um, the study would be based on Walpole voters only? That doesn't go against any.
It's poorly worded.
Yeah, and it might not pass legal muster, but that's not your concern, because it's a petition warrant article.
Right, it can say anything it wants to say.
It's just whether it's legal or not after it's been said.
Exactly.
All right.
Please. The school district shall meet the county. Whether, like, they can say anything it wants, but we don't put it on there.
Any further discussion?
Amended. The deliberative, right?
Yeah.
Seeing the will of the committee is to make a recommendation, move forward.
Aaron, no.
Saint Pierre, no.
Shaking, no.
Marquesi, no.
Verone, no.
Teague, no.
It's disappointing, cuz I think Charles Town already did the work on this petition and they could have just clocked it and taken it down.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just saying.
All right.
We did the work.
It makes me not wanna do it again.
Is there anything else?
Uh, just as, as a note.
The door of the man behind the curtain.
As a note.
I'm sorry.
I've been moderator for a number of years in Charles Town and I've been part of these proceedings for over a decade. Knowing how much it takes to put a warrant together, to get the dates on time to hold the meetings, and how much work goes on behind the scenes, I would just like to voice my appreciation and my admiration of Misty Bushing.
You're here.
Thank you. Thank you.
And it's not easy dealing with, well, at least these pigeons, and so, you know, you're herding squirrels and you do a pretty good job of it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Some pigeons. We need to vote on this one, right?
No, 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 that's true, you have to sign it.
Oh, somebody might wanna give that to me before.
Yeah, well.
Just.
Wait, no, we don't, that's not, that has the.
No, I'll just make note that you signed the MS twenty-seven, I mean, you essentially did accept the MS twenty-seven by accepting Article one.
No, we must play seven, so you're the difference in budget, right?
No, no, not anymore, we.
You have just fixed that?
I fixed it.
Okay, I didn't know, I didn't want, my paper caught and been corrupted.
No, they, this is.
I, Gabe has it, I printed it out. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
Correct one. Got it, okay, I know we had to vote on this.
Nope, I did it tonight.
Okay.
Miss, you want me to come in and sign that, or Mary?
It's up to you, um, I, well, I, I wanna, it needs to be posted by Monday and I was hoping to get half of them, cuz we have to put them everywhere tomorrow, so that's up to you. I have enough to move it forward, but if you want to sign it.
So could you, can you put a note on it, uh, just on there that says voted by Zoom?
Yes, I can.
Is there a pressure for?
Yes.
Sorry. I was gonna say yes, I don't know where.
In the blue folder.
Okay.
Sorry. Aaron lies the issue.
Do I need to sign anything over there?
Yes, I'm just, uh, let you guys sign it first.
Before we. You are out the door. Well, there is the UConn Tennessee game and it starts in approximately twenty minutes.
Oh, you have.
There you go, ladies or?
Amanda has a question.
Amanda has a question.
Missy, we need to sign the MS twenty-seven, so um, how are we going to know, do we know Steve and um, Jamie's?
Um, I can, Jamie is here, uh, Jamie is here, Steve, if you want me to put your, I can put both of your names here and make a note.
It's up to you, I, the only reason I'm not there is cuz I still tested positive for COVID this morning, although I do feel fine now.
I think you can put a note that says voted affirmative or whatever by via Zoom and just, you're the clerk, you can initial it.
Yep, okay. I think that's a good idea.
Yes, I think.
No question. Is there a meeting Monday? Did Amanda say, meeting Monday? What's the hearing for?
The Articles of Agreement changes, we needed to legally hold a hearing before deliberative.
Okay.
On those two things, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I think we can adjourn if we'd like, as long as people sign.
So, treasure, treasures report?
Doesn't exist.
It does not exist this evening, I am so sorry.
Looking for adjournment, you know what? I'm just getting your praise.
I know.
So the first one.
Is there a second?
Second.
There you go.
I'm assuming it was.
Yes, it was.
Made the motion, and Shelley said yes.
Rebecca, the first time that anybody has.